Counselor McGraw. Okay, so, okay, so, any other discussion? Hearing non-secouring call vote?
Mr. Mr. Watkins, just for the record, so the motion is to accept Rayanne Reddall's letter of intent and resume for in-house council position?
Yes, if for council to accept a letter of intent, though, they still have to bring in a contract to, as the council committee may approve or become counsel.
Counselor, a little hot question.
I think we should have had a resolution drafted for this. When the contract comes back? Okay, well, just for the record, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello?
Oh, Lisa, are you on?
Yes, I, Stacy has, I just sent her the resolution of the contract for that. For Adrianne.
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
She just sent me, just sent me. Resolution of the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, resolution of the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the contract with Rayanne Reddall to serve as associate in-house counsel in the OST or Oglala Sioux Tribe Legal Department. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, and under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Constitution, Article four, Sections one B and F, respectively, vests the tribal council with authority to hire a legal counsel and to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, and whereas there is a vacancy in the position of Associate In-House Counsel in the Oglala Sioux Tribe Legal Department, and the position was advertised locally and nationally, and whereas on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Law and Order Committee passed a motion to recommend that the tribe hire Rayanne Reddall, the position of Associate In-House Counsel in the Oglala Sioux Tribe Legal Department for the Killer Musa Administration. And whereas on May twenty-sixth, the tribal council enacted Resolution Number, Link, number one, to approve the selection of Ms. Reddall as Associate In-House Counsel in the Oglala Sioux Tribe Legal Department, two, the tribal council approves attached contract with Ms. Reddall to be paid from the legal department budget within the general fund with an annual salary of one hundred twenty thousand dollars, and three, to authorize the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president, to execute said contract on behalf of the tribe. Now, therefore be resolved that the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby approves the attached Associate In-House Counsel contract with Rayanne Reddall to be paid from the legal department budget within the general fund, and be it further resolved that the tribal council hereby authorizes and directs the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president, to execute the attached contract on behalf of the tribe. Certification.
Okay, Counselor, Carl.
Chairman, I'm going to question quorum, ask for a roll call.
Okay, that's fine. Is that a point order, Counselor? Okay, all right, point order. So, there's a point order to ask for a corner right now? By Counselwoman Carlo, and is there a second? A second by Counselor Rodriguez. So, yeah, so the, so, if you can call the roll to establish or to see if the corner is still standing.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior.
Here.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior.
Present.
Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Here.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Here.
Ella Giancarlo.
Here.
George Dreamer is excused. Gillian Spotted Bear is excused. Richard Ironclad.
Here.
David Puyers is excused. Sonia Littlehawk Weston, here. Jackie Sears, here. Michael Carlos, Senior.
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Here.
Garfield Steele.
Here.
Craig Dillon. Tyler Yellowboy.
Is this Rayanne?
Corn.
Okay, so there's sixteen members present, one absent, and then three excused.
Four excused.
Four excused, sorry. All right. All right, so, I know that we had a previous motion on the floor. There's a, did we get a motion? Okay, and then a second, okay, so any further discussion on this contract? Okay, so hearing none, secretary, you can call that vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Who?
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior.
No.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
No, no.
Craig Dillon.
Counsel, motion passes, thirteen yes, three no, and one upvoting, thank you, counsel. And we have item number F on the Law and Order Committee. Secretary, we can read that.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe requiring members and officers of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council to attend in-person meetings of the tribal council, executive committee, and standing committees of the tribal council, whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three, and under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, and whereas the tribal constitution, in Article four, subsections one S and one U, authorizes tribal council to adopt laws regulating the procedure of the tribal council, the executive committee, and standing committees of the tribal council, and whereas during the global COVID-nineteen public health emergency, to mitigate and contain COVID-nineteen and to minimize the spread of the virus on the Panjat Indian Reservation, the tribal council had permitted its members and officers and members of the general public to attend meetings of the tribal council, executive committee, and standing committees through the use of video teleconferencing technology, and whereas all, nearly all, members and officers of the tribal council have received vaccinations for COVID-nineteen, and whereas on May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, the Law and Order Committee of the tribal council approved the motion to require all members and officers of the tribal council to attend all of their meetings in person and to allow a spiritual leader to come to the meetings to pray. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby declares that effective immediately when the attendance of a member or officer of the tribal council is required at a meeting of the tribal council, executive committee, or a standing committee of the council, such members or officer of the tribal council shall attend such meeting in person and not through the use of video teleconferencing technology. Certification.
Move. Motion by, second by, motion by Chairman Watkins, second by Chairman, Counselwoman DeBray. Any discussion on this, counsel? All right.
General.
Okay, so I've got, so I've got Counselwoman Sears and Counselwoman Steele.
So, on this resolution, will that end Zoom for everybody then, like, for the public or anyone, or is it just for the council and that executive board?
Chairman Watkins.
I think it's for the council, executive board. The committee wanted all the councils start being present, everybody got their shots, and along with the executive board, and to enforce the ordinance that was in place already that it will show up and be fine.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that in case, you know, some of the public wouldn't know that.
Chairman, Counselwoman Steele? Counselwoman Steele?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if, would that become effective after the, this council meeting, because if not, then we might lose quorum, because I think there's a few of us on Zoom today, so if there's any way we could add that, it'll become effective after this meeting?
Yeah, Garfield would be effective after this meeting, but that's a pass, bro.
Okay, thank you, also, any further discussion? Counsel, Counselwoman Troy.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to say that, you know, a lot of, a lot of the things we say and do sometimes require us to be at two places at once, and this allows for that, so I don't believe that we should end the Zoom. I do believe we can enforce the policy on being late on our own, but other than that, I don't think we should get rid of Zoom, because, you know, the next thing we're gonna probably end up doing is requiring the lawyers to be there, and we know, we know that our, our general fund takes a, takes a hit whenever that happens, so, I mean, I just want people to think about that, too, regardless of them being here or not. We're, we're, we're allowing a, a tribe to progress with the technological age utilizing Zoom. Whenever we're, we're sick, we can stay home and Zoom in, otherwise, you know, I don't know, we're just limiting ourselves, I guess, that's all I have to say.
Counselwoman Yelwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we, we, like my colleague down there said, we make decisions and then we, we're, we're the leaders, and, you know, schools went back into school in session, in person, and, you know, they, we require our employees to come back to work. Nowhere does it say we were gonna require our attorneys to be here. You know, we already pay for that, that's part of the, the contracted services that, that they were, that we approved of, we approved of their travel, you know, that comes all with that package. So, you know, as leaders, if we're requiring our people to go back to work, even during COVID, you know, we gotta practice what we preach here. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, I haven't utilized Zoom in a council meeting, because for me, my district put me in, and my district said, you're our voice, so, you know, I make it, and I don't skip out on, on council meetings, because, you know, that's part of our, our jobs, to be here. So, you know, for me, I think, you know, time to, if we're requiring our employees to go and be at work, then, and schools and, and kids to be in session, then, you know, I think we should be here.
Thank you, Counselwoman, for your discussion. Counselwoman Malakas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think that we don't wanna get it too confusing for our tribal members out there, I think the oyate out there listening in, this is only for the tribal council and the executive committee and our standing committees, so, you know, I'm sure the secretary will still provide Zoom for our public, and they can still Zoom in, we're only talking about tribal council and executive committees, I just wanna clarify that, that it's not gonna confuse the oyate that they can't get on Zoom and listen to us, you know, because we're still requiring that, you know, large gathering, and I know that that's gonna have to be continued on, and I think down the road, when it does come to a situation, you know, I guess we don't want it to be that, you know, but I guess if, if for any reason, you know, our numbers start rising, I'm sure that we could instill this again, so I just wanted to clarify that to the oyate.
Thank you, Counselwoman, yeah, Counselwoman Steele and Counselwoman Jumping Eagle.
Well, you know, regardless if we're on Zoom or in person, our attorneys are gonna charge us no matter what, they charge us when you call their phone, so regardless if they're here or not, they're still gonna charge us, and another thing is, it's not fair to our committees when we're in session in one and logged in Zoom on another, because we're only being used as quorum, and here we are, we'll, we'll start questioning stuff that those committees did without our presence, but yet used our, 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 our number for quorum, and that's not right either, you know, the way it used to be with, with one meeting per day or however, you know, that, my opinion is that's the right way to go, because then you're, we're all informed on what that, that committee is doing, it's just not right to use our numbers just for quorum, so I, I think, you know, this is something that should happen, is, is we should go back to work, just like my colleague said, Mr. Yellowboy, you know, we gotta lead by example, if we want our workers to go back to work, our children to go back to school, you know, it's time that we start going into meetings, you know, unfortunately, you know, I, I too would rather be in person, but because I gotta do the tribal council's mandate, you know, I gotta do two hundred hours within ninety days, so I'm trying to, to do what I have to, to, to make sure I stay, stay in compliance with the, the council's wishes, but I really don't care for the Zoom, you know, every time we lose service, we can't talk or vote or whatever, you know, so I, I, I really hope this does pass, because we should go back into in-person meetings.
Okay, Counselman Jumping Eagle. All right, Counselman Jumping Eagle.
So, Chair, you know, a lot, a lot of good discussion here, but I think, you know, I think we should just, and, you know, I'm on Zoom right now, and I can hear clearly, I can vote, I'm just not in person, you know, so, and, and it's, it is the twenty-first century, technology, you know, if you choose not to, to, to use Zoom, then attend the meetings, but, you know, I think it's a good, helpful tool that we have, and that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman, for your discussion.
I've got something, Chair. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair, when I first seen this item on a, on the agenda, I thought that was kind of some form of dictatorship or something, you know, some personal ideologies on what we, what we can do, what we can do as tribal council, and I know there's pros and cons to this issue here, you know, and I've been, I've been on Zoom at the beginning of this administration, and, you know, I, I've been pumped, you know, I've, I've stood through the whole meetings, or even in the wintertime, you know, I, you know, I, I never, I never missed any council meetings, and I've been on every council meeting through Zoom, and so, so I don't think it's really an issue for me, being on Zoom, you know, I do have some personal reasons, you know, one, one is, you know, I just received my vaccine, and I was really hesitant about that, you know, and, and I gave in, you know, and, and so, so my, my next second vaccine is, you know, is like, it's another week and a half away, or still two weeks, and so then, following that is another two weeks, you know, where I gotta, you know, kind of just, you know, continue to stay on Zoom, you know, I, I don't wanna get, you know, infected or something, and you give it to one of your council reps, and you take it home and give it to your family members, you know, this, this vaccine, this, 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 um, virus is still around, you know, we're, we're acting like, you know, it's, it's not, it's gone completely, it's still here, you know, we've been, I know council's been meeting in Rapid quite a bit, you know, where the variant is still, the variant is up there, you know, so, so I think it's, you know, it's, it's my personal choice, and it should be my personal choice, you know, whether to be on Zoom or, you know, some of our children, you know, they say some of our children are in-person school, but, you know, American Horse School, you know, does Zoom, you know, my little grandson was on Zoom, you know, all the way up to last week, you know, so I, I don't, I don't believe that it's all the way across the board where all our children are in school, you know, they're, you know, you know, so I think that's, you know, something I, I, you know, I want to put out there, but, and, and, you know, I do have a son who, you know, who has a seizure disorder, and I'm home with him in the mornings, you know, you know, most of the day, you know, so I kinda monitor him, you know, so, but, you know, that, that's another reason why, you know, that kinda resume helps me, but, you know, to, to be in committee meetings and council meetings, so, so those are my reasons, you know, so I really don't wanna be treated like a, like a young boy or something, you know, I think, you know, you know, as an adult, I think we should have those decisions, you know, and not, not, not be forced to do things like that, so, I really don't appreciate that, but those are my reasons, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Cross, appreciate it. Further discussion, counsel? Counselman, I have one.
We had a meeting, with the elders, and that time, they told, they told me, and they told Mr. DeBray, you know, that they didn't want any more meetings in Rapid City, they wanted all of our meetings to be here, and I think that the only way that, for me, you know, to, to obey them, you know, is to, through the Zoom, and I think that, I think I believe in what they say, though, I think that, you know, all of our meetings should be here on the reservation, you know, and it's not that, I guess, the elders, you know, I, they have a lot of experience, they've lived a long time, so I try to listen to them and try to go by what they say, and so that's just what I wanted to share with you this day this morning.
Thank you, Counselwoman, Counselwoman DeBray.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make one comment here, and it's concerning our constitution, I don't know why we didn't insert that language, but in the constitution it says that each councilman person should be at, present at every meeting, now, I don't know how you take that as being present, so, I don't know if it means you can be on Zoom or, or be in-person present, and that's in the constitution.
Thank you, Counselman, Counselor Rodriguez.
When was that written? Well, I know, but I don't, I, for me, the consideration of, of being in a pandemic and, and with the recent technology we had to adopt that, and to be in that, two places at once, or one place on the other side of the world to attend a meeting, be in DC on virtual Zoom, had meetings with senators and councilmen, had congressmen and everybody else, I mean, I, I think it's beneficial for us that we still have it, and it should be our choice.
December eighteenth, two thousand eight was the last.
Counselwoman Sears, sorry about that, I missed you.
Yeah, I was, you know, thinking about this resolution, I know what it's coming forward, but myself, I kinda agree with Mr. Cross, too, because some, some of the council, you have things going on in your life and health concerns you're worried about, and we have to realize we're still in a pandemic, and I think that there should have been some language in here on a case-by-case basis, and council can approve individually if they request it, and I think this body can do that, because I know that, you know, I took a month off when I lost my grandson, and I went through council and got, you know, approval from council to take a month off, so I think it's a case-by-case basis, I wish that language was in here, because I wanna support, support that, but also think that, you know, we should have some kind of discretionary and, you know, kind of understanding of certain council or executive board that do have some concerns, thank you.
So I got Counselwoman Steele and then Counsel, uh, Chairman Watkins.
Yeah, you know, listening to everyone's concerns, it's, it's, I mean, there's, like they say, in order's prone, const, everything, but to have that mentality about being told what to do, you know, I think council is just used to having no one tell them what to do and have these free reins all these years, but yet we can impose that on our employees, our, our own people, tell them what to do, but yet we get upset when we try to impose something to keep us accountable, and then we're like, oh, we're, we're not little kids, well, what about our employees? They have to go back to work in the same pandemic that we're in, you know, we, we, we made them go back to work a couple weeks ago, but yet, because it comes to us, now we're treating each other like little kids, and that's not right, you know, all we're saying is it's, it's time to go back to doing what we always did in, in the past, and, you know, it's fine, if, if you're off on travel, you were always excused from meetings because you're, you're representing the tribe doing something somewhere else, but still, you know, when, when we have these in-person meetings, like I said, you're, you're, you're actually informed, whereas in not just being used as a quorum, so if we're going to, you know, do this to ourselves and say this ain't good, we, all these reasons with this pandemic, then, you know, let's, let's send our employees home, too, because they're not getting hazard pay, they're not, they're, they're still doing the same work that we, we have to be doing, and yet, you know, we impose it on them, treating them like little kids, that's just my own opinion.
Thank you, Counselwoman Steele, Chairman Watkins.
I understand what you're all saying, and it was brought up on committee, you know, in the past years, twenty years ago, Jackie, you know that, all was a big council, that you were excused when you had to handle things in Washington, you was excused if you're sick, you was excused if there was something concerning your family, it's not saying that you're gonna be fine for not being there, it's saying that, you know, if you have an excuse for not being there, and that should be the chairman, the secretaries, president, that should notify the rest of the committee, it's not, you know, but what we're saying is that people be here in person so we can discuss these issues, and you won't have all this coming up on council floor, debating and wondering what's going on when you guys have meetings, and every meeting that I know is open, land, financial, the council's able to go in there, even if you're not in that committee, to the
Land, financial, the council is able to go in there, even if you're not in that committee to listen. So it's not treating you like kids, it's just enforcing the law that we put in place as council. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Yellowbird.
You know, we're sitting here and, and like chairman, uh, chairman of law and order, we're going around the room and we're beating a dead horse. So I think we just need to end discussion and run the vote.
Run a point of order?
Yep.
How about point of order? Point of order.
Point of order.
So let's do a point of order and let's just run the vote, I mean, we can sit here and go around and around the room and discuss this and and I mean, beat it up and talk it to death, but, I mean, until we run the vote, then that's all we're gonna do in here, we're spinning our wheels.
Thank you. Um, so point of order has been called to have the vote, um, I'll, I'll honor that. Um, so secretary, uh, there's good discussion, so, so I'll just say that. Um, secretary, if you want to call the votes on this? Thank you.
Wesley Hawken Senior. Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Gerald Canoea Junior.
No.
Austin Mokken Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hop Weston. Uh, Jackie Sears. Yeah. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
No.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
No.
I'm only nobody.
Okay, uh, council motion passes ten to seven, so that, that is approved. Uh, I think that's it for law and order committee, uh, thank you, Chairman, appreciate it.
Thank you, committed, oh, come.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, appreciate it. Uh, so we'll move on to, uh, OST, well, uh, OST Education Committee. Um, Chairman DeBray, you want to present those items?
Sorry, can I, oh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm gonna have the, our vice chair uh, do the resolutions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair, uh, go ahead, vice chair, uh, try, you want to present those items?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, an unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogall- of the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving PL one zero zero dash two nine seven contracting for the planning and design, build, school, construction project of the Little One School and opting not to accept ownership of the new school buildings. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five. In accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U.S. subsection five, one, two, three, and under article three of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and whereas, the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Constitution, at article four, section one F authorizes the Tribal Council to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and whereas, the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Education Committee did meet on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one and reviewed the Department of Interior Division of the Facilities Management Letter of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one regarding the new school construction at Little One School and the options available for the design and construction of the project and building ownership attached hereto and whereas, the Education Committee is a standing committee of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council and has been delegated the power to oversee educational programs, including the Little One School, which is governed by its school board pursuant to Ogallala Sioux Tribal Ordinance number seven seven dash three nine, and whereas the Education Committee recommends that the Tribal Council approve option one dash PL one zero zero dash two nine seven contracting and not accepting tribal ownership of the constructed school buildings as the options that are in the best interest of the tribe and of Little One School now. Therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe hereby responds to the Department of the Interior notice of consultation by approving option one dash PL one zero zero dash two nine seven contracting for the planning and design, build RFP phase of the project and the options of not accepting tribal ownership of the new buildings, and be it further resolved that the president or the vice president in the president's absence is authorized to sign the necessary documents to effectuate the purposes of this resolution. Certification. Motion.
Motion made, uh, seconded by Chairman DeBray. Hi, any discussion on this, council? Hearing none, um, secretary, if you can call the votes, thank you.
Wesley Hawken Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoea Junior.
Yes.
Austin Mokken Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hop Weston. Uh, Jackie Sears. Uh-huh. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, council motion passes seventeen four zero against, uh, thank you, Council, vice chairman, come here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, an unincorporated tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe amending ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, one nine dash two-two, to set the regular meeting days for the Education Committee and Land and Natural Resources Committee on alternating Mondays. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection one five, one, two, three, and under article three of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas under article four, section one U of the Constitution, tribal council has the authority to adopt ordinance is regulating the procedure of the council itself, and whereas the tribal council has exercised its authority to establish seven standing committees of the tribal council to assist in the governance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Ordinance numbers one nine dash two-two, May twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, and two-one dash one-five, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-one, and whereas ordinance one nine dash two-two, as amended by ordinance two-one dash one-five, sets the regular meeting days for the standing committees, and whereas, the Education Committee and the Land and Natural Resources Committee have their regular meeting days on Mondays, however, both the Education Committee and Land Committee desire to set their regular meeting days on alternating Mondays, and therefore be it ordained that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby authorizes and approves the setting of the regular meeting days for the Education Committee and Land and Natural Resources Committee on alternating Mondays. Be it further ordained that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council here, hereby amends section two of the ordinance one nine dash two-two, May twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. The Standing Committee Ordinance of two thousand nineteen, as amended by ordinance twenty-one dash one-five, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, to read as follows. With deletions and strike-through and additions underlined in the bold. Section two, meeting days and notice, A. Regular meetings. The regular meeting days of the standing committee shall be as follows, alternating Mondays, education, land. Number one. Number two. Tuesday, Health and Human Services, number three. Wednesday, Judiciary Youth Affairs Committee. Thursday, Finance for number four. Number five, Friday, Economic and Business Development. Be it further ord- ordained that the foregoing amendment to the Standing Committee Ordinance of two thousand nineteen, ordinance number one nine dash two-two, as amended by ordinance two-one dash one-five, shall go into effect immediately. Certification, motion.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Watkins. Um, what were your question, okay, I'm sorry, uh, Chairman DeBray.
Question, I'll second it, well.
Sure.
Um, if it's okay with the chairman of, um, education and vice. Um, we have Wednesdays for Judiciary and Youth Affairs, and, um, we'd like to go ahead and, um, be attached to this because we need to get that youth affair going. We'd like to alternate to Wednesdays for, um, the youth. Since it was put in, um, ordinance to start that committee. We need to alternate it also with on the Wednesdays for the youth, youth affairs committee. If that's all right with the chairman, we can add that on to an inch here somehow.
Uh, a vice chairman, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, um, okay, and you can, your chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's acceptable, yeah, so we'll make that amendment, uh, secretary, if you copy. Do you want to pass clarification? No, okay, so, okay, so again, yeah, so there's, uh, adding youth affairs on Wednesdays, I think that's the.
Yeah, we'll have, um, judiciary one, one, one Wednesday and then upon Wednesday to have youth community affairs, alternate instead of, uh, Monday.
Yeah, okay, that'll be good, so, okay. Uh, further questions, council? Right here. Uh, boy, Councilman.
So, uh, Madam Secretary, there is a therefore be it ordained in the second clause underneath that, it says therefore be it ordained again, does it need to say be it, be it further ordained?
Correct.
Okay, could we go ahead and amend that as well? Thank you.
Also, um, on that therefore be it ordained, we could add after alternating Mondays and that the Judiciary and Youth Affairs shall alternate Wednesdays. And then on section two meeting days, number three, we can insert alternating Wednesday Judiciary and Youth Affairs Committee. And officially as Law and Order Committee, so.
Okay, council, uh, so, uh, secretary, if you could, uh, see notice, further discussion, uh, secretary, if you can call the vote.
Wesley Hawken Senior.
What's that?
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh, oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoea Junior.
Yes.
Austin Mokken Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. Uh-huh. Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Uh, council motion passed seventeen four zero against, thank you, council. Uh, moving on to our two-thirds items now, um. I, Chair. Oh, no, no, we're, we do the two-thirds first, I believe. Oh, the district.
We're actually, um, there's a new agenda that's, um, been passed out. And after these, uh, regular items, we, um, went into the two-thirds items because that's how we've been doing it in the past few meetings, so we've done the committee two-thirds immediately following the regular. And it would be on page. And the first up here, two-thirds items would be the HHS Committee. So that's on page three, I will continue with, it says fourteen two-thirds items. Number fourteen. And then OST HHS Committee is first.
Um, okay, thank you for that clarification, uh, Councilman, is that? Councilman, go on, questions, is that okay? Okay, okay, I think you, um, so we got item number fourteen, which is, uh, two-thirds items. And so the first one up is OST Health and Human Services Committee, uh, Chairman Jumping Eagle, uh, do you want to present that item?
Looking through my email, I can't find it.
Um, vice, vice chair. Um, okay, I, I don't think that's been sent out yet.
It came from your committee secretary.
Oh, it came from your committee secretary. Chairman.
Chair, I'm still not finding it in my email.
Oh, vice chair, do you have? You're a good reader, vice chair.
I will read it.
Thank you.
Ordinance of the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe amending the Ogallala Sioux Tribe's Enrollment Code, chapter sixteen of the OST Law and Order Code approved by ordinance number eighteen dash zero three solely to address limited enrollment committee meeting stipend. Or as the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four. Twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three. And under article three of the Constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas under, whereas, excuse me, whereas article four, section one J of the Constitution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe empowers the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council to enact resolutions or ordinances. I believe that's supposed to be not, but no, not inconsistent with article two of the Constitution concerning membership of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And in section one W to adopt laws protecting and promoting the well, the health and general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And under article two, membership, section two provides that the Tribal Council shall have the authority to adopt laws covering, or that's supposed to be co- laws covering, or governing, covering future membership. And whereas on February sixth, two thousand eighteen, the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approved the two thousand seventeen amendments to the OST Enrollment Code, chapter sixteen of the Chapter sixteen of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Law and Order Code. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe reviewed the issue of enrollment committee member stipends and considers it, in the best interest of the tribe, to raise the stipends, the amount of the enrollment, amount, amount for the enrollment committee members to one hundred and fifty dollars and to have their stipends cover their mileage. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council agrees that the position of the Health and Human, agrees with the position of the Health and Human Services Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Now therefore be ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby amends section sixteen point nine point zero two B of the OST Enrollment Code, Chapter sixteen of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Law and Order Code. And to read as follows. Comment, committee members will be paid a stipend of one hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. Quote, end of quote. Be it further ordained that there are no other amendments to the OST Enrollment Code, Chapter sixteen of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Law and Order Code. And be it further ordained that the amendments to the OST Enrollment Code, Chapter sixteen of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Law and Order Code shall be, shall take effect immediately.
Motion. Motion made, uh, is there a second, second by Councilman Youngman? Of any discussion on this item? Hearing none, um, secretary, if you can call the vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Um, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Uh, council, that passes sixteen yes, and we're not voting, thank you, council. And thank you, uh, Chairman Jumping Eagle and Vice Chairman Yellboy for making just.
Sure.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead on councilman.
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment, I know Ella John, she asked about that uh, action we took in HHS about appointing Tyler as ex officio onto the housing board. It needs to be a amendment to the charter. So we're gonna have to have our, our attorneys make that amendment and it's an ordinance. So it'd have to be, have to come back to the council. Um, we thought we could do it, uh, there was talk of you appointing him from the president's office. But I don't think that could happen, I just getting off the text with Lisa and that's the way to do it.
Okay, uh, thank you for clarification, uh, chairman, so I was gonna, yeah, prepared the right letter, but appreciate it. Um, anything else, chairman? Okay, thank you, chair, appreciate it. Uh, so we'll move on to uh, item number, uh, OST Finance Committee, uh, item A. Uh, I believe, uh, chairwoman, why horses excused the meeting, uh, vice chairman, Yellboy, if you wanna help introduce those items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will read the uh, two thirds items for finance. So. Here we go. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to extend the reservation wide cleanup to the month of June two thousand twenty-one. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of, of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article four, set, section one W of the Constitution empowers the Tribal Council to adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas by resolution number twenty-one dash one one six approved April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, the Tribal Council declared the month of May two thousand twenty-one to be reservation wide cleanup month on the Pinehurst Indian Reservation. And called upon all tribal programs, tribally chartered entities, and district service centers to assist in the cleanup to the extent they are able to do so. And whereas on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, by motion, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council recommended extending the reservation wide cleanup through the month of June two thousand twenty-one. And whereas Tribal Council concurs with the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby amends resolution number twenty-one dash one one six, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, to extend the reservation wide cleanup on the Pinehurst Indian Reservation through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And by this resolution, the Tribal Council calls for the removal of trash, junk, abandoned, and dilapidated cars and other debris throughout the reservation. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council calls upon all tribal programs, tribally chartered entities, and district service centers to assist in the cleanup to the extent that they are able to do so, including but not limited to the Oglala Sioux Tribal Land Office and the Oglala Sioux, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Department of Corrections, the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Authority. Motion.
Uh, motion made, is there a second, second by Councilman Youngman? Um, or, uh, Vice Chair Yellboy?
And, uh, the fifth member is still heading this project up.
Andy likes it, so that's a good job. Uh, thank you, uh, appreciate that. Uh, any, any, uh, anything else, uh, any discussion on this? Uh, hearing none, uh, secretary, if you can call the vote, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Well, fourteen yes, we're not voting, thank you, uh, secretary, appreciate it, um, Vice Chair Yellboy, your next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm glad everybody got popcorn, 'cause since the long one. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the new tax collection agreement between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the state of South Dakota. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Tribal Constitution, the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe has the authority to levy taxes upon persons on the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, OST Constitution Article four, section one H. And whereas for many years, the Oglala Sioux Tribe has imposed various taxes on the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, including but not limited to retail sales, service, use, tax. A con, contractors' exercise tax, cigarette and tobacco tax, and seasonal tourism tax, among others. And whereas for decades, the Oglala Sioux Tribe has entered into tax collection agreements with the state of South Dakota concerning the administration and collection of these and other taxes on the reservation. Whereas a tribal state tax collection agreements are designed to promote the fair and efficient collection of taxes on the reservation to raise essential tax revenue for the tribe to reduce burdens on the tribe by authorizing the State Department of Revenue to collect applicable taxes on behalf of the tribe and to remit to the tribe nearly all of the tax revenue less administrated, less, and lessing administrative fee to reduce conflicts and litigation between the tribe and the state over taxing jurisdiction on the reservation. And whereas the tribal tax includes in the tribal state tax collection agreements and our retail, and our, and the retail sales, service, and use tax, the tribal contractors' exercise tax, and alternative contractors' exercise tax, cigarette and tobacco taxes, amusement device tax, exercise tax on farm machinery and seasonal tourism tax. And whereas at present, the State Department of Revenue remits to the tribe ninety-six percent of the tax revenue collected on the reservation by the department pursuant to tribal state tax collections agreements, and less an administrative fee equal to one percent of the payment to the tribe. And whereas through its tax collection agreements, the state and the tribe net millions of dollars per year in tax revenue. And this tax revenue is used for, used to fund essential government, governmental programs and services for the tribe and its members. And whereas one of the tax collection agreements between the tribe and state is scheduled to expire at the end of May two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the tribe and the state have engaged in negotiations for a new five-year tribal state tax collections agreement to replace and supersede the agreement that is expiring. And whereas the new tribal state tax collection agreement, a copy of which is attached to this resolution, provides that the state will continue to remit to the tribe ninety-six percent of all tribal, of all tax revenue collected of, on the reservation by the state pursuant to the agreement, less an administrative fee equal to one percent of the payment to the tribe. Or as approval of the new tribal state tax agreement before, let me bring, go back, whereas approval of the new tribal state tax collection agreement before the end of May two thousand twenty-one is necessary and essential to ensure that collect, the continued collection and payment to the tribe of millions of dollars in tribal tax revenue. And whereas the agreement area in the tribal state tax collection agreement includes certain portions of the Pinehurst Indian Reservation within South Dakota, South Dakota, namely all of Oglala County, all of Jackson County, south of the White River, and select lands within Bennett County. And whereas the Pinehurst Indian Reservation includes all lands within the exterior boundaries of the reservation as established by the Act of March second nineteen eighty-nine, twenty-five, SAT eight 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 eight. And such other lands as have been added thereto, thereto, and whereas it is the position of the Oglala Sioux Tribe that all of Bennett County is included within the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, consistent with the decision in the United States versus Bennett County, three ninety-four F point two D eight, Eighth Circuit nineteen sixty-eight. And the United States Department of the Interior concurs in that position. See Department of Interior Solicitor opinion, April eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And the Bureau of Indian Affairs Great Plains Regional Director Letter, December third, two thousand fifteen. See also Constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe of the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, Article one, Territory, approved by Secretary of Interior, January fifteenth, nineteen thirty-six. And whereas by entering into a tax agreement with the state of South Dakota, the Oglala Sioux Tribe does not waive or relinquish its claim that all of Bennett County is included within the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, and instead the tribe expresses the, preserves that claim. Whereas the Finance Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council held a special meeting on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one and passed a motion to recommend approval of the new tax collection agreement between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the state of South Dakota effective June first, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the Tribal Council concurs with that recommendation of the Finance Committee. And now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the tax collection agreement between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the state of South Dakota, a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference and authorizes the president of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to execute the said agreement, provided that the following language on page four of the agreement be stricken. Quote, the parties agree, the parties agree that there are other lands within Bennett County, South Dakota, that may qualify as Indian country as defined by eighteen USC subsection one one five one C. And that there are, and that are controlled by the tribe and that are not included into the agreement area as described above. The parties agree that at any time in the future that the businesses are located on such lands or plan to be located on such lands upon the written request of either party, the party shall meet within thirty days of the rece, receipt of written request to negotiate the extension of this agreement to such lands, end quote. Be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council declares that the Pinehurst Indian Reservation includes at a minimum all lands within the exterior boundaries of the reservation as established by the Act of March second nineteen eighty-nine, twenty-five, section eight eight eight. And such other lands as have been added thereto. And be it further resolved that it is position, that it is the position of the Oglala Sioux Tribe that all of Bennett County is included within the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, cons, consistent with the decision of the United States versus Bennett County, third, three ninety-four F point two D eight, Eighth Circuit nineteen sixty-eight, and the United States Department of Interior concurs in that position. See Department of Interior Solicitor's opinion, April eighth, two thousand three. And the Bureau of Indian Affairs Great Plains Regional Director's letter, December third, two thousand fifteen. See also the Constitution and bylaws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe by the Pinehurst Indian Reservation, Article one, Territory, approved by the Secretary, January fifteenth, nineteen thirty-six. And be it further resolved that by entering into the tax agreement with the state of South Dakota, the Oglala Sioux Tribe does not waive or relinquish its claim that all of Bennett County is included within the Pinehurst Indian Reservation. And, and instead that the tribal, the tribe expresses to preserve, expressly preserves that claim. Motion.
Motion made, uh, second by Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman DeBrey. Um, is there, uh, any discussion on this item, council? Uh, hearing or seeing that online or in person, uh, secretary, if you can call the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, council, that motion passes unanimous, seventeen four zero against, thank you, uh, council, thank you, vice chairman. Uh, vice chairman, then next item, see.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to authorize the use of the coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds received by the Oglala Sioux Tribe under the American Rescue Plan Act for Containment and Mitigation of the COVID-nineteen Public Health Emergency on the Pinehurst Indian Reservation. of the COVID nineteen public health emergency on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Ogallisou tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article Three of the Constitution, the Ogallisou Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisou tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the Ogallisou tribe, the Ogallisou tribe council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article Four, Section One F, One K, One M, and One W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect, preserve, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and to adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisou tribe and its membership. And whereas in response to the COVID nineteen public health emergency, the tribe declares a state of emergency on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And the Tribal Council adopted numerous ordinances and resolutions to establish and implement public health measures and emergency relief programs and other and otherwise address the health, welfare, and safety of the tribe and its members and other reservation residents in relation to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And whereas by ordinance number twenty-one dash fourteen, February twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-one, the Tribal Council authorized the use of funds from the tribe's Corona coronavirus relief fund, CRF payment under cor- cor- the coronavirus aid relief and Economic Security Cares Act, Public Law one-one-six dash one-three-six, March twenty-seven two thousand twenty, to pay for day labors whose services were subsequently dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And whereas the the tribe has received additional funding through the state and local coronavirus physical recovery fund established by the American Rescue Plan Act Public Law one-one-seven dash two, March eleventh two thousand twenty-one to mitigate and respond to the COVID nineteen public health emergency and to respond to the impact of COVID nineteen and its tribes, communities, residents, residents and businesses. And whereas the United States Treasury Department adopted a interim final rule on May tenth two thousand twenty-one on permissible uses of the state and local coronavirus physical recovery funds eighty-six federal reg two-six-seven-eight-six, May seventeenth two thousand twenty-one and to express and to permissible uses set forth in the interim final rule, build and expand upon permissible expenditures under the CRF eighty-six federal reg at five at two seven two-six-seven-nine-eight. And whereas the interim final rule provides that the recipients may use the physical recovery funds to respond to the COVID nineteen public health emergency or its negative econ- economic impacts eighty-six federal regs two-six-eight-two-one thirty-five CFR subsection three thirty-five point six B including for the coronavirus or COVID nineteen response and prevention. Eighty-six federal regs at two-six-eight-two-one thirty-five CFR subsection thirty-five point six B one. Payroll and cover benefits expressed expenses benefit expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees to the extent that the employees time is spent mitigating or responding to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Eighty-six fed reg at two-six-eight-two-two thirty-five CRF subsection thirty-five point six B two. And to assist programs that responded to the COVID nineteen public health emergency eighty-six fed reg at two-six-eight-two-two thirty-five CRF subsection thirty-five point six B eight, among other things. And whereas on May twenty-second two thousand twenty-one, the Finance Committee of the Tribal Council by motion recommended that the Tribal Council authorize a day labor program beginning May twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-one and continuing through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-one with up to twenty day labors and two supervisors in each of the nine districts on the reservation to mitigate and respond to the COVID nineteen public health emergency on the reservation. And whereas the Tribal Council concurs with this recommendation of the Finance Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou Tribal Council hereby authorizes the use of funds from the Ogallisou tribe's payment from the state and local coronavirus physical recovery fund established by the American Rescue Plan Act Public Law one-one-seven dash two, March eleventh two thousand twenty-one for a day labor program beginning March twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-one and continuing through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-one with up to twenty day labors and two supervisors in each of the nine districts on the reservation to mitigate, respond, and to the COVID nineteen public health emergency on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And be it further ordained that all payroll benefit payroll and benefits expenses for the day labors and supervisors as authorized in this ordinance shall exclusively shall be for shall be exclusively for the time spent mitigating or responding to the COVID nineteen public health emergency on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And be it further ordained that pay that all payroll and benefits expenses for day labor and supervisors as authorized and by this ordinance shall be exclusively for the purpose listed in section two A of ordinance number twenty-one dash fourteen, February twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-one, including disinfection of public areas and other facilities, elderly complexes, or homes in response to COVID nineteen public health emergency. Distribution of medical protective supplies, sanitizing products, and personal protective equipment and distribution of food delivery to senior citizens and other vulnerable populations and persons protective personal protective equipment to quarantine individuals and to communicate and enforce the public health orders related to COVID nineteen. And for the following listed in section two E of the ordinance number twenty-one dash fourteen, February twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-one, care for homeless persons in order to mitigate COVID nineteen effects and enable compliance with COVID nineteen public health precautions. And essential home repairs to remedy uninhabitable housing conditions so that tribal district members can comply with COVID nineteen public health precautions. And performing other work that respond in that responds to the COVID nineteen public health emergency that is approved by approved and authorized by a resolution or ordinance of the Ogallisou Tribal Council in compliance with the U.S. Treasury's Department's interim physical rule on permissible uses of the state and local coronavirus physical recovery funds eighty-six Fed Reg two-six-seven-eight-six, May seventeenth two thousand twenty-one. And be it further ordained that the they that the day labor shall be hired by the tribe on a day-to-day basis and shall be considered at-will day labor employees with no grievance rights under the tribe's personnel policies and procedures manual ordinance eighteen twenty-two, August sixteenth two thousand eighteen as amended. And they shall they shall, there should be a B in that. There they shall be compensated at a rate of eleven seventy-one per hour for a maximum of eight hours per day with no benefits. And be it and be it further ordained that the supervisor shall be hired by the tribe on a temporary basis and shall be considered at-will temporary employees with no grievances grievance rights under the tribe's personnel policies and procedures manual ordinance eighteen twenty-two, August sixteenth two thousand eighteen, as amended as they shall there should be a B in there, shall be compensated at a rate of thirteen seventy-one per hour for a maximum of eight hours per day with no benefits. And be it further ordained that the tribe shall require supervisors to provide documentation to justify that all hours claimed for compensation by day labors under their supervisors and all hours claimed for compensation by the supervisors themselves are dedicated to mitigate dedicated to mitigate or responding to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Motion.
And motion made second by, um, vice or by Councilman DeBrey. Uh, questions, uh, councilwoman, uh, seriously.
Yeah, um, on page three on that first, uh, be it further ordained? It says that that all payroll and benefit expenses for the day labors and supervisors. So when you look read that and then you're reading down on the be it further ordained? That there's no benefits. So it's kind of contradictory. So is it with benefits or not?
Um, that that should be with not.
So that top part probably needs to.
Need to be.
Take that take that benefit expenses out.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, uh, for that, Councilwoman Sears. Um, further questions, council? Uh, hearing or I I have one vice chair, uh, just real quick, who who prepared this? Like who was it? Uh?
Mr. Dunn.
Okay, okay, that's all. Okay, thank you. Um. I think that's.
That's why it's ten pages long.
I I am in the meeting, Tyler.
Yeah, Mr. Gunn. Just kidding, I'm kidding.
No, no, I I get it.
Said Vice Chair, Vice Chair, if you want to have him have a read the next ordinance, you can do that. Um, um, okay, any other questions? Uh, hearing non? Um, secretary, if you could, uh, call it both, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoea Junior.
Yes.
Austin Locken Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Brown DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclaw.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Um, Jackie Sears. Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, that motion passes seventy-four zero against. Thank you, uh, vice chairman and finance committee. Appreciate all your support and help.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll come back. Uh, I believe it's Chairman Carlos next. Um, land committee, uh, chair, if you want to present your items to council.
Mr. Chair, I asked the secretary to not functioning on all eight cylinders right now, so I asked the secretary to read our resolutions and the first resolution is actually a land committee issue. The next six items really come from the HHS. But because my committee is really concerned about the workload of the HHS committee, we're bringing those forward, especially in where we're addressing the people and the water services across the reservation.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Carl for that. Um, so we have a few items coming from the committee. Um, I know that the secretary has prepared to read them, so.
Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe requesting the United States Department of Agriculture to engage in government government consultations with the Ogallisou Tribal Council pursuant to Tribal Council Ordinance Number eleven dash ten. Whereas the Ogallisou tribe adopted a constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five pursuant to section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four forty-eight stat nine-eight-four now codified at twenty-five USC subsection five-two five-one-two-three. And whereas under Article Three, Section One of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisou Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas under Article Four, Section One A of the Tribal Constitution, the Tribal Council is empowered to negotiate with federal, state, and local governments on behalf of the tribe. And whereas under Article Four, Section One M of the Tribal Constitution, the Tribal Council is empowered to M to protect and preserve the property, wildlife, and natural resources, gases, oil, and other materials, et cetera, of the tribe and to regulate the conduct of trade and use and disposition of property upon the reservation reservation, excuse me. Whereas the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation consists of the entire territory established by section one of the Act of March second eighteen eighty-nine twenty-five stat eight-eight-eight which required travel con- consent in section twenty-eight of the act before the act went into effect. Whereas section eight dash twelve of the eighteen eighty-nine act authorized allotments on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation subjects to proviso in section nine of the act which provided that provided that these sections as to the allotment shall not compulsory without the consent of the majority of the adult members of the tribe except that the allotment shall be made as for the orphans in parentheses emphasized applied. And whereas the Ogallisou tribe resisted allotments on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation until or under the eighteen eighty-nine act. But in total disregard for the.
Everybody's quiet, you know?
But in total disregard for the provision of section nine of the act, the Secretary of Interior instructed allotting agent Charles Bates to start allotting the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in nineteen oh four based on Lone Wolf versus Hitchcock case one-eight-seven U S five-five-three nineteen zero-three. A case decided one year earlier whereby the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that the honorary power of the Congress gave it the authority to unilaterally abrogate Indian tribes and agreements and whereas as a result of the Secretary of Interior's decision to arbitrarily and unilaterally abrogate section nine of the eighteen eighty-nine act and issued allotments on the Pine Ridge Reservation pursuant to the Lone Wolf versus Hitchcock decision without the consent of the majority of the adult members of the Ogallisou people. The United States government created the fractionated airship problem that now confirms confronts the Ogallisou tribe and other Sioux tribes whose reservations were arbitrarily and unilaterally allotted under the eighteen eighty-nine act. And whereas according to the recent bulletin issued by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the trust land base on the reservation is approximately one point seven million acres in parentheses is the website. And whereas a substantial amount of tribal trust land on the reservation consists of primarily number one unallotted tribal lands which the Secretary of Interior was barred from allotting under the section one of the Indian Reorganization Act twenty-five USC subsection five-one-zero-one which provides that on or after June eighteenth nineteen thirty-four, no land of any Indian reservation created or set apart by treaty or agreement with the Indians active Congress, executive order, purchase, or otherwise shall be allotted in severality to any Indian. Number two, lands acquired by loans from the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, under the Act of April eleventh nineteen seventy twenty-five USC subsection four-eight-eight of which the tribe is still indebted to the USDA in the amount of approximately five point five million. Number three, lands acquired by the Indian buyback program. And number four, lands acquired under the COBELL Settlement Land Buyback Program. And whereas all government agencies, including the USDA, have fiduciary responsibilities to tribes and must always act in the best in the interest of their tribal beneficiaries. COBELL Indian Community versus FERC twenty-five F two D five-eight-one Ninth Circuit ninth nineteen ninety. And whereas Zach Dushno, an enrolled member of the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, who worked many years as executive director of the Intertribal Agriculture Council was appointed was appointed by the Biden-Harris Administration to the position of Administrator of the Farm Service Agency, USDA, on February nineteenth twenty twenty-one. And whereas Heather Thompson, also enrolled member of the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, was appointed by the Biden-Harris Administration to the position of the Director of Office of Tribal Relations of USDA on January twenty-fifth twenty twenty-one. And whereas, the Oglala Tsubal Tribe has numerous agriculture-related issues that it would like to engage in government-to-government consultations with USDA. Zach Ducheno and Heather Thompson pursuant to Tribal Constitution Ordinance Number eleven dash ten, including but not limited to the following. Number one, forgiving of all outstanding farm agency loans of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe. Two, providing funding to the tribe's hemp commission to recover the cost of administering the provisions of the USDA, approved, amended, and restated warriors in the garden hemp regulatory ordinance, number twenty dash twenty-seven, adopted by the Tribe pursuant to Agriculture Improvement Act of twenty eighteen, AKA as the two thousand eighteen Farm Act. Number three, providing funding and budgetary opportunities for the hemp commission, the same as the funding for the Farm Service Agency, F A, F S A, and the Natural Resource Conservative Service, N R C S, of USDA. Number four, assist in the eligibility of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and member growers slash processors for hemp or farm process in instances such as environmental quality incentives program, granting insurance subsidies, et cetera. Number five, opportunities for USDA non-insured crop disaster assistance program, funding for reservation Indian farmers and growers. Assisting, number six, assisting the tribe and its members in funding in finding markets for hemp and hemp products produced by tribal members on the Pinewood Indian Reservation. Number seven, assisting the tribe and its members in finding markets for agricultural food products produced by tribal members, including both farming and ranching food products on the Pinewood Indian Reservation. And eight, other funding opportunities for tribes under the Agricultural Improvement Act of two thousand eighteen and under the upcoming Federal Infrastructure Bill. Now therefore be it resolved that President Kevin Keller is set up, set up a government-to-government consultation with Zach Ducheno, Heather Thompson, necessary USDA staff, and the Tribal Council pursuant to Section seven of Tribal Constitution Ordinance Number eleven dash ten, when consultation is requested by the Oglala Tsubal Tribe on the before said tribal agriculture requests and concerns. And be it further resolved that the government-to-government consultations between the Tribal Council and USDA be held at blank, on blank twenty twenty-one. And that the President, and that President Keller provide USDA with copies of the agenda and Tribal Constitution Ordinance Number eleven dash ten, along with the letter to USDA requesting the government-to-government consultations with the Tribal Council. And be it further resolved that all Tribal Council members are requested to attend the government-to-government consultations. Since a quorum of the Tribal Council is necessary to transact business at the consultation under Ordinance Number eleven dash ten. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Secretaries shall, shall be responsible for setting up APA system and an overhead projector and refreshments for the government-to-government consultation meeting. And be it further resolved that the following persons and entitles be invited to participate in the government-to-government consultations between USDA and the tribe. Number one, the Superintendent of the Pineage Agency to answer any land or agriculture-related questions that only the BIA can answer. Number two, the OST Hemp Commission Director Licensing Board to answer any questions related to the tribe's hemp program. And number three, Gary Roos and Attorney Jennifer Hughes, certification.
Uh, motion made by Chairman Carlos or second, second by Councilman Watkins? Uh, sorry, uh, Councilwoman Sears?
Yeah, Chair, um, Mike Verland. Um, in the discussion when we went over this, was this going to be like having the, them come down to the reservation? Because when you're saying that, in here, that the whole council should be there to, um, during the consultations, and usually they're elsewhere, so are we requesting them to be here, come here?
The whole intent, you know, is that, you know, the Tribal Council all take an active role in what we're doing here. And if need be, then, uh, we would send a delegation to Washington. So our first request, I guess, is that they would come here.
Uh, Councilwoman, okay, um, uh, further questions or comments, Council? Um, and is there a date, Chairman Carl?
I think what the committee decided was that, um, he would be the individual setting this up.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilman Arias. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, all right, all right, Councilwoman Verland, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess, uh, that, uh, I think consultation, I think they should come here to our, um, to us, and so that we can consult with, together. And I think that would probably be a lot better, because then I think the full council can be in attendance.
Okay, I'll put that in the request, that they come here, and then, um, see what they say, so, yeah. Uh, further discussion? Uh, hearing received none, uh, online or in person, Secretary, if you could, um, call a vote, please, for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Gerald Canaya Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yep.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Um, Jackie Sears? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Council, that motion passes sixteen yes and one not voting. Thank you, Council. Item number two from Land Committee, B, I think, uh, Secretary, we could read that.
Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Tsubal Council approving Doug O'Brien contracting contract change order number one to add a line item to the individual scattered sites contract for homes on the Pinewood Indian Reservation. P R twenty nineteen dash I N D W S dash one. Whereas the Oglala Tsubal Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Tribal Council is the governing body. And whereas the Tribal Constitution authorizes to Tribal Council in Article four, section one eight, to negotiate with federal government on behalf of the tribe. In section one F to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. In section one G to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available Tribal Council funds. And in section one W to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Tsubal Council has the authority to approve contracts and change orders. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee is a standing committee of the Tribal Council that oversees the Indian House service, IHS Martin sanitation facilities, construction contracts. And whereas the Oglala Tsubal Tribe Water and Sewer Company requires the approval of a change order and contract modification to add one line item for non-daylighting press-by advance in viral septic system between the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and Doug O'Brien Contracting Inc. And whereas on May twenty-fourth twenty twenty-one, the Oglala Tsubal Tribe Land and Natural Resources Committee met during regular session and approved the change order to add one line item for a non-daylighting press-by advance in viral septic system to the contract change order number one will not increase contract P R twenty nineteen dash one I N D W S dash one time or cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe has voted to approve the contract change order for Doug O'Brien Contracting to add one line item for the non-daylighting press-by advance in viral septic system to the individual scattered site contract, P R twenty nineteen dash one I N D W S dash one, with no change in cost or time. And be it further resolved, the Tribal President or in his absence, the Vice President is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute change, contract change order number one, certification.
Uh, is your motion? Motion by Chairman Carlos or second, second by Councilman Dillon. Uh, any discussion on this, Council? Hearing none, uh, Secretary, we call a vote. Council, we'll take a break at three, so we can do these motions then.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Gerald Canaya Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? James Cross?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes sixteen four, one not voting. Thank you, Council. Um, item number C from OST Land Committee.
Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Tsubal Council approving Doug O'Brien contracting contract change order number one to add work for the construction of the Pinewood Lagoon bypass piping contract, P R twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one. Whereas the Oglala Tsubal Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Tribal Council, Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe. And whereas the Tribal Constitution authorizes to Tribal Council in Article four, section one A to negotiate with federal government on behalf of the tribe. In section one F to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. In section one G to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available Tribal Council funds. And in section one W to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Tsubal Council has authority to approve contracts and change orders. And whereas the Land and Natural Resource Committee is a standing committee of the Tribal Council that oversees the Indian House service, IHS Martin sanitation facilities, construction contracts. And whereas the Oglala Tsubal Tribe's Water and Sewer Company requires the approval of a change order and contract modification to add additional work to contract P R twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one between the Oglala Tsubal Tribe and Doug O'Brien Contracting. And whereas on May twenty-fourth twenty twenty-one, the Oglala Tsubal Land Natural Resources Committee met during regular session and approved the change order to add work to the contract. Change order number one will increase contract P R twenty twenty-one dash CSL dash one by a total of fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-five cents from two hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to two hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred, seventy, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Additional work includes additional parts and labor for bypass pumping of the first secondary lagoon, and additional time of forty-five calendar days are requested. The price and completion date is revised to reflect the additional costs and time required for this work to the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe has vote, voted to approve the contract change order for Doug O'Brien Contracting to add time and work to the Pinewood Lagoon bypass piping contract, P R twenty-one dash CSL dash one, and increase the contract total by fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five sixty-five cents from two hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to a total of two seven hundred and, two hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, and adding forty-five calendar days to the completion date. And be it further resolved that the Tribal President or in his absence, the Vice President is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute contract change order one. Certification.
Motion made by Councilwoman Carl, sent by Councilman Dillon. Any discussion on this, Council? Uh, Councilman Watkins?
Is this the one change order, Mike, they're going to be having, or they're going to come back again?
Okay, so we have the director, okay, good. Uh, just introduce yourself.
My name is James Ainsley. I'm the senior engineer for the IHS in Martin Field Division, uh, in the Martin Office. These, uh, this change order is to address additional work that was discovered in the, in the process of the project. Uh, no additional change order are anticipated, however, I can't guarantee that. Uh, I would certainly be coming back to committee and then council if one were to arise, but not are anticipated.
Uh, further questions, Council? Um, hearing, no, uh, thank you, Mr. Ainsley, we should, um, Secretary, if you want to call a vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Gerald Canaya Junior? Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Um, Council, that motion passes sixteen yes, one excuse, thank you, Council, appreciate it. Um, item number D.
Resolution? Resolution of the Oglala Tsubal Council of the Oglala Tsubal Tribe. Resolution of the Ogalosha Tribal Council of the Ogalosha Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogalosha Tribal Council of the Ogalosha Tribe approving the M O A between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service, I H S Sanitation Facilities Project, G P dash two one dash K zero three, and the Ogalosha Tribe in the amount of forty-four thousand to repair deficiencies with the existing water storage tank to continue to provide water cer- supply for twenty-three homes in the Wolf Creek Community of the Pineridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Ogalosha Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December, that should be fourteen nineteen fifty-three in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five U S C subsection five one two three, and amendments. And whereas, under article three of the Ogalosha Tribe's Constitution, the Ogalosha Tribe is the governing body of the Ogalosha Tribe. And whereas, article four, section one T of the Ogalosha Constitution authorizes the Ogalosha Tribal Council to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers in article four, section one, reserving the right to review and the action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas, the Land and Natural Resources Committee is a standing committee of the Ogalosha Tribe and has been delegated the power to oversee health and human services programs on behalf of the Ogalosha Tribal Council and the Ogalosha Oyate. And whereas, the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project, G P dash two one dash F zero three in the amount of forty-four thousand, is scheduled to renovate the existing water storage tank located in the area of the Wolf Creek Community. And whereas, this project will impact, impact twenty-three homes in the Wolf Creek Community that has been provided wastewater and solid waste disposal facilities. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the Ogalosha Tribe and the Oyate that this project be approved by the tribal council. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council recommends approval of the M O A between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Project, G P two one dash K zero three, and the Ogalosha Tribe in the amount of forty-four thousand to renovate the existing water stor- storage tank for twenty-three homes in the Wolf Creek Community on the Pineridge Reservation. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Ogalosha Tribal Council for final approval, certification.
Thank you, uh, is your motion? Motion by Councilman Dillon, second by Councilman Carl, to approve the Wolf Creek Community Water Repair. Uh, any discussion on this item, council? Hearing none, or in line or in person, Secretary, if you can run the vote, thank you.
Um, I would like to recommend a clarification on the, therefore be it resolved to take out recommends and just put that the Ogalosha Tribal Council approves of the M O A.
Is that, is that okay, uh, Councilman Carl, to, okay, okay, thank you. Um, further discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, if you can call a vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior? Gerald Canoria, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Council, motion passes fifteen, four, two not voting, thank you, council. And then item number E, and then I'll take a break after this.
Resolution of the Ogalosha Tribal Council of the Ogalosha Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogalosha Tribal Council of the Ogalosha Tribe approving the M O A between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service, I H S Sanitation Facilities Project, G P dash two one dash K zero three, and the Ogalosha Tribe in the amount of sixty-eight thousand to repair deficiencies with the existing underground water storage tank to continue to provide water supply for eighty-seven homes in the Kyle Evergreen Community of the Pineridge Indian Reservations. Whereas the Ogalosha Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty, fifty-three in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act nineteen thirty-four twenty-five U S C subsection five one two three, and amendments. And whereas, article three of the Ogalosha Tribe's Constitution, the Ogalosha Tribe is the governing body of the Ogalosha Tribe. And whereas, article four, section one T of the Ogalosha Constitution authorizes the Ogalosha Tribal Council to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers of article four, section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas, the Land and Natural Resources Committee is a standing committee of the Ogalosha Tribe and has delegated the power to oversee health and human services programs on behalf of the Ogalosha Tribal Council and the Ogalosha Oyate. And whereas, the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project, G P dash two one dash F zero four, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, is scheduled to renovate the existing water storage tank located in the area of Kyle Evergreen Community. And whereas, this project will impact eighty-seven homes in the Kyle Evergreen Community that has been provided wastewater and solid waste disposal facilities. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the Ogalosha Tribe and the Oyate that this project be approved by the tribal council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogalosha Tribal Council approves of the M O A between and among the Great Plains Area Indian House Service Sanitation Facilities Project, G P two one dash K zero three, and the Ogalosha Tribe in the amount of sixty-eight thousand to renovate the existing water storage tank for eighty-seven homes in the Kyle Evergreen Community on the Pineridge Reservation. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Ogalosha Tribal Council for final approval, certification.
Uh, motion by Chairman Carl, your second, second by Councilman Dillon, Councilman Youngman, uh, further discussion or questions, uh, Council, uh, Councilman Watkins?
Chairman, I'm just curious, where is this underground water storage tank that we're talking about?
Once again, this is James Ainsley with I H S. This particular tank is at ground level, so it's not obvious, but it's, uh, just to the north of the, uh, Evergreen Community.
Go up on the hill or?
No, it's, it's, I, I can provide an area for, to show you, but it's, it's in the community.
Just curious, I thought real water ran all up home, so I'm just trying to figure out where your water ground, underground tank was.
They provide the water, we are trying to modify the tank to keep it in compliance with the E P A modifications. It's fully functional, the water's safe, everything is, is good, they just demand a different type of, uh, air release valve, uh, otherwise they're gonna continue to generate a lot of paperwork and hassle for the, uh, Water and Sewer Company, and we're trying to help them out with this project here. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Councilman, further questions, council? Uh, hearing none, Secretary, if you could call a vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior? Gerald Canoria, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, Council, motion passes fifteen, four, two not voting, thank you, council. So we'll take a break for fifteen minutes and then we'll come back here, uh, and we'll be, we'll finish the rest of the agenda items. I think we have three more items to vote on, the rest reports, so that's where, so we're almost done, it's council.